This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vader City Council. It is 6:08 PM on April 16th, 2025. Roll call.
Jason Daly.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Randy said he was going to be here, but he is absent at the moment.
Michael Ferguson.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Mayor Shai.
Here. All right, I'm a quorum. Pledge allegiance. Parsons, you did it all?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, universal, with liberty just as a throne.
Mayor's report, the comprehensive plan update. Planners with SBN were here last week for a few days. They took part in some different meetings we had. They attended planning committee in person and met with city staff. They toured the city and they took pictures. This was all mostly related to the comprehensive plan and the climate planning work that was grant funded so that they could make sure to put together a good, good report for us. Fourth of July Committee, contact Ken Jocelyn if you'd like to join the committee. There's always room for more. Mayday Committee, could also use some volunteers. Fiber, the fiber broadband install. So we got City Hall on a new internet. All the computers are working great. We're still transitioning the phone service though before we cancel sentry link. And vacant council position. Thank you Sheila Goff for your service. She did resign a couple of weeks ago and so if someone is interested in, in being on the council, please submit an application at City Hall. We have the applications available online, I believe, as well. But you can get one in person. And then after the next council meeting, depending on applications and how the council feels, we may appoint someone new. And if you remember, I think we have 90 days to make that appointment before we lose our ability to. Whoever does get appointed would fill Ms. Goff's position until the certification of the November election, which is around Thanksgiving. That's when they would take the position.
Well, they would take the position now.
Wait, they would take the position now, the appointed person would lose the position because the newly elected person in the election would take the seat.
Whoever's.
Around Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was way more complicated than it needed to be. All right, council reports. Any members of the council have anything to report?
F Street is smooth again. It's a private road.
The people or the road itself?
The road itself.
Okay.
And we have our garbage back also.
Oh, great. I actually thought of something else to say. The Friends of Little Falls is putting on another concert at McMurphy on May 31st. So there's a, there's a flyer over there on the table if anyone's interested in seeing it. And all the profits go to getting the theater stage built. All right, agenda approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting agenda for April 16th, 2025.
We have a motion from Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda for April 16th. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Ferguson? Or was that Jason? Jason, was that you?
Nope.
That was Mike, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for April 2nd, 2025.
A little motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the meeting minutes from April 2nd. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second.
Second and Mr. Daly that time. Any discussion? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I did aye. Okay.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
Make a motion that we approve the amended beginning of December 2024 vouchers for $31,911.32 and the end of April 2025 for $24,737.94.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers as stated. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second. If you're wondering if you haven't noticed yet in the vouchers why we're amending December, there was an issue paying Santa Claus for the park event at the beginning of December. Their check needed to get rewritten and so.
I'll have to relook at it. Santa Claus didn't get paid $31,000.
No, 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 no. That's the amendment. Santa Claus got paid.
Because I'm gonna be Santa Claus.
Santa Claus got paid $150. He's getting paid in April instead of December. That's something to do with their bank, not, not us. Anyway, that's it. Any other discussion? There are not all those in favor of approving the vouchers, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports. We do not have. Put this second. Mr. Ruben, you're standing over there like you have a special report.
No, sir. I was just looking at this.
I was like, it's not your week. Okay. No special reports tonight. Public comment. Any members of the public have any comment? Mr. Allison.
Your worker needs to watch what he says because once he starts saying that he's law enforcement, that is breaking the law.
You're referring to Darren, right?
Yeah, Darren is famous.
Okay.
Yeah, because I can park on public roads. He has no way to stop it. Tell me, you can't be parking on city roads when you're supposed to be law enforcement. Well, he's not law enforcement. I call him law enforcement. And they don't have him as any law enforcement.
That's correct. Yeah, Mr. Hutton is not law enforcement. He is code enforcement, but not law enforcement.
Well, law enforcement and code enforcement is two different things and you claim yourself as law enforcement, you're breaking the law.
Well, I can follow up with him on that.
And there is a problem going on up there. G Street between Sixth and Fifth. Neighbor up there got that. We talked and everything else. And they thought the road, the road was vacated to them, which is not. And.
This is, they thought G, G Street was vacated?
G between Sixth and Fifth.
Yeah.
They've been cutting grass up there, which I understand, but the city needs to go up there and do their job and trim the brush and everything else so I can get to my property on G Street. This is city road.
Yeah, well, a lot of, just saying, a lot of our roads are unmaintained because they're just right of ways and so.
Yeah.
And so it's not an actual road. It is trees and.
According to your public works personnel, that, and these roads are, that were vacated at one time, according to law bodies, up there was vacated. Back in, six months ago, they were unvacated.
No.
The roads and alleys. So.
We didn't do anything six months ago.
I don't know. That's why I was told by courthouse, when I called up there to find out what was going on. So I appreciate it. The city will go up there and cut the brush so I can get to my property.
Is that the only access to your property?
I can go through the rest of my property, but I can't drive. And the easiest way to get to my property on Sixth Street, same as you can have, is through those roads.
Okay, so this is the north side of G Street, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll take a look at it. Any other public comment? Nope, okay. City business. Counsel to discuss vacated F Street, south of 10th. The reason this is on here, there was a resident who lives on F Street that sent an email in, in and asked us to, the city council to discuss it again. And so that person is not here and they are not online. So I did put him on the, on the agenda as I was requested. I'm also in your packet. It is the information from.
2023.
2023, yeah. So originally we sent a letter to the residents of S Street getting their opinions on if the city were to take F Street back, which as it was vacated over 20 years ago, what that process would look like. And if you remember, we got. And it was at their request. Remember, a lot of those residents came to the city council meeting and said, hey, please do this. And so we talked to the engineer and the attorney and sent them a letter to say this is what the process would look like. And then those same people called City Hall and left threatening messages that they were going to sue us and all these things. And so we sent another letter, which is also in your packet, saying that since we had such overwhelming negative feedback, that we weren't going to look into doing it. And, but, and now we have some folks that are asking that we do it again. So, but at least the one person, so.
And since then, there's one person that made a complaint to LeMay. So LeMay cut everyone's garbage off. Well, didn't cut it off. They have to carry their, or not, they have to roll their cans to 10th Street, which 10th Street is, I mean, I don't know where they're going to put them on 10th Street. And so unless we all, everyone signed a waiver, which I understand from LeMay, I get that. But that one thing caused everybody to miss garbage for one week and it's just, it's a debacle. We need to, I think that we need to just take it back and and, but I have a big say in it because I own probably 80% of the east side of F Street. So you can have the east side of F Street.
It doesn't do us much, doesn't do the city much goodness. It has the whole street. So, well, part of the, I mean, there's a couple of different ways to, to do it. I mean, one of, our hope was that the citizens were so sick of the issues with it being a private road, with people parking wherever they wanted and blocking it and.
And the potholes, the potholes were huge. And then I, after a 7,000 mile trip, came home and the first thing I did was grade the road.
Putting a fence up.
It was a simple process of the city, like adjusting the, the property lines, right? Then we just take the road back and the city was willing to take on the, the obligation of paying the money to do it, right?
Right.
But then the landowner.
Survey.
The landowners wanted money too. And that's, if I remember right, that's why we just said, no, we can't pay you to fix your problem.
I think, I think the other thing is the 40 foot wide. I think that's what scared a lot of people. F Street is 30 feet wide now. And five feet on each side of it isn't. I don't see where it's going to be that big of a.
I know in 20, last year, two years ago, when they were looking at this, the city had a, one of the, you know, we have different road standards and urban design standards. And 40 feet was our, was, was our smallest design standard, right? That allows eventually someday in the far distant future, you know, two travel paths, parking on both sides, sidewalks and all that kind of stuff. But now the, we do have a, a 30 foot standard available to us now. The folks at the Hendrickson Development are going to use that when they build 11th Street. That's going to be a 30 foot standard, which allows, it's the same thing, you know, sidewalks, two travel paths, but allows parking on one side of the road. So it's a much smaller standard and so.
I think that if we did do the 30, the other issue with F Street is just whoever wanted to, they, a tree started growing. So instead of cutting it down, they moved it around the tree. So instead of a straight line like it's supposed to be, it veers off to the side here and veers off to the side there. And so I think that if we did the, the, find the center line and go off of that, then there's. People aren't going to freak out that you're taking their whole yard away. That's, because it's already marked and it has been. We just might have to clean up like a pile of dirt that's there or whatever.
Well, I mean, in the short term, if, if we had, if the city had gotten the road back, you know, I mean, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have built a 40 foot road through there, you know, just like everything else. I mean, in front of my house, the right of way in front of my house is 80 feet. And I've got, you know, 20 feet of that is my lawn. So it's not all, it wouldn't all get built out, but, I mean, is council interested in sending another letter with a 30 foot standard instead? Or do we, or do we not want to open this can of worms right now?
I think that we should and I'll, you can put on there that I won't maintain the road anymore. Because that's what everybody was griping about, but when I do need to clean the road, then they speed.
I think we need the.
Tired, so.
I think we need the, to have F Street as a city street. But I don't want to, I don't want to fight with people over it. And I don't think we should have to pay people to, you know, adjust any of that, you know? I mean, as far as the people that were taking the roadway back from.
Right, yeah, because it would be roughly 15 feet in front of everyone's home on both sides, right? 15 feet on both sides if we did a 30 foot standard.
And that's what it is right now. Everything's set to about 30 feet. Except for a pile of debris down at the end.
So, all right, so Mike's in favor of sending another letter. Anyone else interested in seeing if, if residents are ready to talk about this again?
There's a new resident down there and I don't, there was like two people down there. I haven't talked to them, but I was told that they didn't even know that it was a private road, which is shocking because there's.
There's a giant sign.
There's a huge sign that says private road, no turnaround. But yeah, if they just moved in and they're shocked about it, that's a huge shock for somebody.
Yeah. Well, and G Street between Eighth and Ninth is a private drive as well because the city vacated it however long ago. So we've put private, private drive or something signs up so people would know that they're.
My drive, my driveway into my property is vacated G Street as well between 10th and Ninth.
Yeah. That makes sense because it goes right up to your house and garage.
Well, I, because I own, I own parcel, my parcels, two separate parcels that is on both sides. Kind of the same as the Hancock's property there. So, I mean, I think that they initially wanted to set that up as their own little subdivision, but wanted to utilize city infrastructure implements to, you know, create their subdivision. So that, that, those are things we're dealing with from our forefathers. But does this, item one of city business need a motion? Joe?
No, no, if you, if, if two or three of you are interested in doing it, we can send a letter. It's not a big deal. Letter of interest.
Well, it sounds like we got two of us on board.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll, we'll send out a, a letter to get a, to, just to take the temperature back there again. Maybe this latest garbage issue will change people's minds.
Looks like we lost Jason.
We did lose Jason. We better not continue until he comes back. Say, Mike, you've been, you said you've been maintaining the roads, bringing in gravel and going into the bottom.
Well, we brought in gravel three years ago, four years ago, maybe even longer than that. But I have a, one of those land planes, like the city ended up buying to. And that just brings the gravel up to the top and drops the dirt down below it as it goes. So we don't need any more gravel on it. It just needs to be planned every quarter, three months.
It sounds like you got to take a collection back there and kind of share the cost a little bit.
I do get 20 bucks here, 20 bucks there from people, which I appreciate.
If you need gravel, I'm hooked up with Elrock now and I can get.
That's who I usually get.
The buy rates, I can get it for $17 a ton.
Jason, are you back?
Yes.
Super. All right, moving on to item number two then. Counsel to consider resolution 012025 park board appointments. So we did have two vacancies on the park board. We got a handful of applications. Anson and Angela Service have both requested to be on there. And they've been doing quite a lot with the, with the parks already. And so I'm submitting your, their names for your approval. Also, on that resolution, you'll see that Mo, Jeremy Mo and her, her term of service is actually going to expire next month. And so it's by her request, it's been extended for another three years. Be adding Angela and Anson and extending Mo.
I will make a motion that we approve resolution 0125 for the park board appointments of Anson Service and Angela Service and extending Mo's service.
A motion by Mr. Parsons to approve resolution 012025 for park board appointments. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Daly. Any other discussion?
That was Mr. Ferguson.
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw Jason light up green. Second by Mr. Ferguson. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number three, counsel to consider resolution 022025. These really are first resolutions of the year. Wow.
Nothing gets done.
Yes. Usually we're through up to like 25 by now. Resolution 022025, initiate negotiations with Lewis County for annexation. Alexander from SBN Planning is online with us right now. Hello, Alexander. Would you like to talk about this a little bit?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. So we have been in the process of discussing the annexation with the county. Our team has been putting together communication with the public works department there with their planning department. And we have met with quite a few Lewis County staff. My colleagues at SBN have been working closely with the mayor on the specifics of the areas to annex. In the packet that was provided to the council, I don't know if that was provided to all of the members of the public there. We do have a map of the proposed annexation territory. And you'll, you'll note that that is slightly less than the full UGA. And that, that's based on Lewis County's recommendation that we begin by annexing all parcels that are fully within the UGA, the urban growth area. And that partial parcels not be annexed. And so it's our recommendation that as a first step, that's, that's the process we go through. The resolution before you is to initiate negotiations formally. And that's something where the city passes a resolution to do so. And then the county passes a parallel resolution. It's, it's sort of a formality that says the two jurisdictions are going to discuss and come to terms on what this annexation is going to do. So what, what you have before you is a, is a proposal for what would be annexed under this particular process. Does, does anybody from the council or the mayor have any questions?
One of the issues we bumped into is, again, as Mr. Ferguson said, our, we're inheriting some problems that our, our forefathers gave us. There are some parcels in the, in, in the urban growth area that weren't fully in the. So normally, you know, we would think that, you know, if they have a new urban growth area, you know, they would, it would follow the outline of, of whole property parcels, right? In this case, it didn't. There are some areas where I cut them in half. So like half the parcel is in the urban growth area and half isn't, which is something that should not have happened. No idea and it was a long time ago. So because of that, the county doesn't, is not interested in, in having us annex in areas that are not fully in the, in the urban growth area. And so therefore we don't get any of, we can't ask for any of those parcels.
Are those mainly Annan side?
It's the, it's the west side of Winlock, Vader. And.
We previously discussed this, right? Like kind of adjusting those lines based on those properties.
Yeah. And, and, and SBN's been talking with the planners at Lewis County and, and, and they're, they're, they, they're saying no, so. There is a map in here, here. These maps here. And then I think there's a small, there's a parcel down, there's one or two parcels down in Enchanted Valley on the south side that are the same way. Just to.
And, and Mayor, for, and council, for additional clarification, the, what the county would typically like to see in this type of situation is that we what's called a UGA swap. So we, we would actually swap acreage during a second process. We would take and align the, we would take the acreage that is in our UGA that we haven't annexed and we would reallocate that to areas and negotiate that with the county that make logical sense for the jurisdiction. But that, that again, would be a secondary process. That wouldn't be this process. I just want to make sure that it's clear that the jurisdiction doesn't lose all of that UGA immediately. It's, it's just that we, we do have some capability of shuffling that around. But that would be in a, that would be at a later time, potentially a year or two down the road, based on the county's timelines.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? There is, on the back of the agenda bill, there is a recommended motion.
Hold on, Mike, send it. Recommended motion. I make a motion to adopt resolution 02-2025 authorizing the city planner to begin negotiation in an interlocal agreement with Lewis County for annexation of a portion of the unincorporated urban growth area.
Of the unincorporated urban growth area.
New motion by Mr. Parsons to approve resolution 02 2025. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second, Mr. Ferguson. Further discussion, questions? All right, all those in favor of uh resolution 02 2025 say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? Thank you, Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Alexander.
Um item number four, council to consider resolution 03 2025 consultant service agreements for engineering. Uh so we've had a long-term engine, a long, an engineering firm for a very long time. They're doing, they still do an excellent job. Uh we don't wanna get rid of them. However, um they're getting very busy. They're up in Lacey and um. And because of that, their, their turnaround on some things is taking longer and longer. And here in Bader, we like to be as fast as possible. So um. This uh request is to add a second engineering firm. This would be Fuller Designs up in Centralia. Um so that if we have any overflow work, um that we can send it their way for approval. And have faster turnarounds for our um residents that have permits or other things that need to get reviewed by engineering.
Perfect. I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 03 dash 2025 consulting services agreement with, for engineering.
However, most of Mr. Parsons approve resolution 03 2025, the public services agreement for engineering. It's with Fuller Designs. Um on that, uh is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by, who was first? I couldn't tell. You're both green. Mr. Ferguson. Um yeah, on there is the price, the, the, um their rate sheet is on the, on, in there in exhibit. B, I believe. Um and it's, it's within $20 of our current engineer. Um so it's very, it's very um comparable and so. Should not affect our, our folks getting permits at all, depending on who we, who we need to select, so. Any other discussion on this? Okay, uh hearing done. Um all those in favor of resolution 03 2025 for engineering services say aye.
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 Any opposed motion carries? All right, lastly, item number five, council to consider purchase of tractor remotes for the flail mower. Uh $2,192.18. So we did buy the flare, the flail mower. Uh but it didn't have all the parts it needed for our particular tractor. Uh it needs to have the lines and the valves that run and the remotes that go to the back of it. And so um this is to get the flare, flail mower working. And so we'll be able to, I figure we can uh expense this a little bit to parks, a little bit to streets and a little bit to the sewer plant. And spread the money around through a variety of line items. And so it'll be a, it should not have much of an impact.
How, when are they getting it done?
Uh as soon as we approve it, we can go up to Jennings and then get it done.
Perfect. I make a motion that we approve the purchase of the tractor remotes for the flail mower.
Motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the purchase of the tractor remotes for the flail mower, tractor remotes for the flail mower. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Ferguson. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the purchase say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? All right, uh let's see on the city business. Any elected official comments tonight?
Welcome everyone that's here.
All right.
Normally don't have anybody out there.
Let's all just keep yelling our thoughts.
Who? This meeting's adjourned to 6:41 PM.